Okay.
It's on the line.
No, I got some. Is that a restaurant?
No, it's the coffee.
Yeah.
They got great hands, great hand burgers.
Actually, that sounds good right there.
Thanks for cracking me up.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
We just got one of those. Okay, here we go. Welcome to tonight's Beaver Creek Board of Education for September 19th, 2023. Would you please call the room?
Dr. Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Hunt.
Here.
Mrs. Regano.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
And Mr. Stein.
Here.
Do you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're into presentations. Oh, no, we're not. I need a motion a second to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Thanks.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt.
Yes.
Mrs. Regano.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
And Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Now, we're into presentations.
Hey, we have a number of presentations this evening. First one is actually just more informative. We are actually going to be starting each month. We do a school spotlight. We're going to continue doing a school spotlight. However, we're also going to add in something that's going to be called High School Happenings. So what we've done is we're working with Dale Ren to identify a group of students who will come to each board meeting, probably two to four students that are going to spend five minutes kind of giving the board an update on what's happening at the high school. Not only is it great for the board to hear that, but you can ask questions of the kids and also it will allow for our community who are watching online the opportunity to hear what's happening at the high school, some of the highlights that have already happened and then what is coming up. And so we figured most of the stuff we hear about is coming from the high school and therefore this would be a great opportunity. So really just wanted to add that in there to let you know. We were hoping to have somebody tonight, but didn't work out that way. So we are going to be dependent upon having our kids show up for that, but we'll have that for next month for sure. So we're pretty excited about that. The next one is always a bittersweet one, and that is retirement recognition. So with that, I'll invite Mr. Schwerman up to the microphone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Otten, Mrs. Kitz Miller, Mrs. Regano, board members. Tonight is a special night. I know that typically most of our retirements come at the end of a school year and over the summer. This year, we had one person who just had to hang on a little bit longer. And we're all very grateful for that. I would like at this time to ask Mrs. Val Hoyer to come forward and stand right here. Val Hoyer submitted her letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement recently. And Val, whenever the board takes action on the purpose of retirement, on a resignation for the purpose of retirement, they do adopt a resolution, and I would like to read that resolution at this time. At the meeting held by the Beaver Creek Board of Education meeting on September 19th, 2023, the following resolution is adopted. Whereas the Beaver Creek Board of Education has received the notification of retirement of Valerie Hoyer, and whereas the Board of Education wishes to publicly recognize and commend Mrs. Valerie Hoyer for her outstanding contributions during her 30 years of dedicated service to the Beaver Creek schools and community, and whereas through her efforts, the quality of support rendered at the district's students, staff, and administration, and the performance of our schools' missions are greatly enhanced, and whereas Mrs. Hoyer leaves an outstanding professional and personal record, which will serve as an exemplary model for all of us to follow, and whereas her presence, influence, and contribution have helped to make our schools a better place, therefore, be it resolved that the Beaver Creek Board of Education does hereby accept with regret the retirement resignation of Valerie Hoyer and does publicly express to her its sincere appreciation for her outstanding career in our schools and wish her health, happiness, and a long, active, and contented retirement. Mrs. Hoyer, at this time, I'd like to ask your building principal, Mrs. Walk, to come forward. She has a few words to say before we allow you to speak. You can stay right where you are.
Right. I'm not sure what all I can say about Val, but when you think about the job of a special needs assistant, and if you could create the perfect person to do that job, it would be this lady right here. She has the heart, she has the knowledge, she has the skills, and the dedication to help our kids that struggle every single day. And she does it with a smile and a lot of energy, which is amazing. Val is a Beaver Creek grad, and so is her husband Roger. So she is orange and black through and through, but I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to work with Val, both at Valley when I was principal, way back when I taught, and I know Joanne worked with her as well, and then at Traybine all these years. So she has made a big difference in the lives of many, many kids and their families, and definitely on the staff at Valley and at Traybine that she's worked with. So Val, we're going to miss you, and you have raised the bar. I mean, the expectations now for special needs assistant are way up here because, you know what? Val Hoyer did it this way. So congratulations on your retirement.
Mine's going to be short, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank the district for giving me the opportunity to be part of this great school system. The job fit my family perfectly and gave me the flexibility to work while our sons were getting their quality education in this district. I am truly thankful for all the support that was given to me over the years from all the wonderful people I have come in contact with, some which are here tonight to support me, Connie and Melissa. And I want to thank you. Lisa, what can I say? You have, what can I say that you haven't heard before? You are a blessing to all of us, staff, students alike. With your loving presence that shines through each day, no matter what the circumstances, I will miss you all. Thank you.
All right, congratulations, Val.
Our next presentation is Mrs. Annika Reddigan. She's going to discuss or provide a communication update for the board.
Good evening. We usually do this once a year, if you guys recall. So you each have a packet. I'm just going to go over some analytics, I should say, I guess, from our social media, some of our print communications and things like that, just to kind of show you where we are, where we've been, and kind of where we go. Currently, we do, we have our website, social media. It looks like I forgot to throw a YouTube icon on there because there's one missing. Digital, we do three different publications, and then we do quick connections for print. And then we have some video, video audit free that we do throughout the year. So that's kind of where we're going to touch base and just give you some updates. I put in here our website. You can kind of look, I know you can probably see better on your paper. I just pulled some analytics. Google Analytics has recently changed a little bit, so they look a little different if you're used to seeing those. But I pulled from just August 22nd through today, or yesterday, I guess, to show you kind of where our top pages are, where people are going, shows you how many views, how many users, and things like that. Over on the right, you can see just kind of a users per minute. So we do get a lot of traffic to our website, which is one reason it's important for us to keep working on that website. It's come a long way from two years ago, if you recall. Always room to improve, but just kind of shows us where our more popular pages are and kind of where we need to focus and put our information. So just for you guys to look at. Next, go to social media. I did hear, I found where in 2022 February, we listed kind of where we were with Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube as far as followers. You'll see on 2022, Facebook, they had likes back then. That's no longer the case now for companies and businesses. They just have followers, so you can't like a page anymore. So that's why you don't see it from this month. But I put below, you can kind of see how we've grown over the last year and a half. Facebook significantly we've grown, Twitter, not too much, but a little bit, we went up, and then Instagram and YouTube is really surprising to me. We've almost doubled, or a little bit more than doubled, I guess, our subscribers. I think that's due to we live stream all of our concerts, and we've gotten better at doing that and being on a schedule. So I can't remember the exact number. I have them all listed for this year. I think there's close to 30 that we will livestream between all the middle school concerts, the high school concerts, and the various cabaret, show choir, things like that. So definitely see, we have people looking at us on social media. Go a little bit more depth in that. For Facebook and Instagram, if you're not familiar, they kind of run Tangent, the same company. So that's why you can get a lot of analytics that are both of those together. I show our followers for both, Facebook and Instagram, and I kind of, I broke it down for you by age and gender, which is very beneficial when we're trying to reach certain groups, knowing where we're putting the information. You can see here, there's not a lot of 18 to 24-year-olds on Facebook. So if we're trying to reach that market, we don't want to really push Facebook. That's more Instagram. Instagram has a little bit higher, but really that's probably like Twitter or things like that. So just kind of informational pieces here that helps us understand where our people are looking for information. On the right side, you can see, I went ahead and did August 1st of last year till July 31st of this year, so last school year basically, to show where we were for reach. And I put at the bottom kind of what Facebook defines reach, if you're not familiar with that. It's the number of people who saw any content from our page.
Have already happened and then what is coming up. And so we figured most of the stuff we hear about is coming from the high school. And therefore, this will be a great opportunity. So really just wanted to add that in there to let you know. We were hoping to have somebody tonight, but it didn't work out that way. So we are going to be dependent upon having our kids show up for that. But we'll have that for next month for sure. So we're pretty excited about that. The next one is always a bittersweet one, and that is retirement recognition. So with that, I'll invite Mr. Schwerderman up to the microphone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Otten, Mrs. Kitz Miller, Mrs. Regano, board members. Tonight is a special night. I know that typically, most of our retirements come at the end of a school year and over the summer. This year, we had one person who just had to hang on a little bit longer. And we're all very grateful for that. I would like at this time to ask Mrs. Val Hoyer to come forward and stand right here. Val Hoyer submitted her letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement recently. And Val, whenever the board takes action on the purpose of retirement, on a resignation for the purpose of retirement, they do adopt a resolution. And I would like to read that resolution at this time. At the meeting held by the Beaver Creek Board of Education meeting on September 19th, 2023, the following resolution is adopted. Whereas, the Beaver Creek Board of Education has received the notification of retirement of Valerie Hoyer. And whereas, the Board of Education wishes to publicly recognize and commend Mrs. Valerie Hoyer for her outstanding contributions during her 30 years of dedicated service to the Beaver Creek schools and community. And whereas, through her efforts, the quality of support rendered at the district's students, staff, and administration, and the performance of our schools' missions is greatly enhanced. And whereas, Mrs. Hoyer leaves an outstanding professional and personal record, which will serve as an exemplary model for all of us to follow. And whereas, her presence, influence, and contribution have helped to make our schools a better place. Therefore, be it resolved that the Beaver Creek Board of Education does hereby accept with regret the retirement resignation of Valerie Hoyer, and does publicly express to her its sincere appreciation for her outstanding career in our schools, and wish her health, happiness, and a long, active, and contented retirement. Mrs. Hoyer, at this time, I'd like to ask your building principal, Mrs. Walk, to come forward. She has a few words to say before we allow you to speak. You can stay right where you are.
Right. I'm not sure what all I can say about Val, but when you think about the job of a special needs assistant, and if you could create the perfect person to do that job, it would be this lady right here. She has the heart, she has the knowledge, she has the skills, and the dedication to help our kids that struggle every single day. And she does it with a smile and a lot of energy, which is amazing. Val is a Beaver Creek grad, and so is her husband Roger. So she is orange and black through and through. But I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to work with Val, both at Valley when I was principal, way back when I taught, and I know Joanne worked with her as well. And then at Traybine all these years. So she has made a big difference in the lives of many, many kids and their families, and definitely on the staff at Valley and at Traybine that she's worked with. So Val, we're going to miss you, and you have raised the bar. I mean, the expectations now for special needs assistant are way up here because, you know what, Val Hoyer did it this way. So congratulations on your retirement.
Mine's going to be short, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank the district for giving me the opportunity to be part of this great school system. The job fit my family perfectly and gave me the flexibility to work while our sons were getting their quality education in this district. I am truly thankful for all the support that I was given, that was given to me over the years, from all the wonderful people I have come in contact with. Some which are here tonight to support me, Connie and Melissa. And I want to thank you. Lisa, what can I say? You have, what can I say that you haven't heard before? You are a blessing to all of us, staff, students alike. With your lovely presence that shines through each day, no matter what the circumstances, I will miss you all.
All right, congratulations, Val. Our next presentation is Mrs. Annika Reddigan. She's going to discuss or provide a communication update for the board.
Good evening. We usually do this once a year, if you guys recall. So you each have a packet. I'm just going to go over some analytics, I should say, I guess, from our social media, some of our print communications and things like that, just to kind of show you where we are, where we've been, and kind of where we go. Currently, we do, we have our website, social media. It looks like I forgot to throw a YouTube icon on there because there's one missing. Digital, we do three different publications. And then we do Crete Connections for print. And then we have some video, video audit free that we do throughout the year. So that's kind of where we're going to touch base and just give you some updates. I put in here our website. You can kind of look, I know you can probably see better on your paper. I just pulled some analytics. Google Analytics has recently changed a little bit, so they look a little different if you're used to seeing those. But I pulled from just August 22nd through today, or yesterday, I guess, to show you kind of where our top pages are, where people are going. Shows you how many views, how many users, and things like that. Over on the right, you can see just kind of a users per minute. So we do get a lot of traffic to our website, which is one reason it's important for us to keep working on that website. It's come a long way from two years ago, if you recall. Always room to improve, but just kind of shows us where our more popular pages are and kind of where we need to focus and put our information. So just for you guys to look at. Next, go to social media. I did hear, I found where in 2022 February, we listed kind of where we were with Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube as far as followers. You'll see on 2022, Facebook, they had likes back then. That's no longer the case now for companies and businesses. They just have followers, so you can't like a page anymore. So that's why you don't see it from this month. But I put below, you can kind of see how we've grown over the last year and a half. Facebook significantly, we've grown. Twitter, not too much, but a little bit, we went up. And then Instagram and YouTube is really surprising to me. We've almost doubled, or a little bit more than doubled, I guess, our subscribers. I think that's due to we livestream all of our concerts, and we've gotten better at doing that and being on a schedule. So I can't remember the exact number. I have them all listed for this year. I think there's close to 30 that we will livestream between all the middle school concerts, the high school concerts, and the various cabaret, show choir, things like that. So definitely see, we have people looking at us on social media. Go a little bit more depth in that. For Facebook and Instagram, if you're not familiar, they kind of run Tangent, the same company. So that's why you can get a lot of analytics that are both of those together. I show our followers for both, Facebook and Instagram. And I kind of, I broke it down for you by age and gender, which is very beneficial when we're trying to reach certain groups, knowing where we're putting the information. You can see here, there's not a lot of 18 to 24-year-olds on Facebook. So if we're trying to reach that market, we don't want to really push Facebook. That's more Instagram. Instagram has a little bit higher, but really, that's probably like Twitter or things like that. So just kind of informational pieces here that helps us understand where our people are looking for information. On the right side, you can see, I went ahead and did August 1st of last year till July 31st of this year, so last school year, basically, to show where we were for reach. And I put at the bottom kind of what Facebook defines reach, if you're not familiar with that. It's the number of people who saw any content from our page. They don't necessarily have to interact with it, but they at least saw it. So 356,000, 383 for Facebook, and then 16,654 for Instagram. And then below that, I went ahead and just did the start of this school year, so August 1st to September 14th. So for Facebook, there's a significant, I think, piece of information there because we've already, we're already halfway, over halfway to where we were all last year. That could be for different reasons, could just be the content we're posting. Could be people are on social media more. It could be just the way we were posting a little differently than we had in the past. Last time I did this presentation, I like, if you were familiar, Allerton Hill was control, or was our third-party company that handled all of our social media. That contract, we ended June 30th. So as of July 1st, all of our social media came back into in-house. So it runs through my department. So we post a little differently than they did. They kind of were on a schedule Monday through Friday. I'm a little different on when I post my times. So maybe a good thing, may just be beginning of the school year. We'll see how this pans out overall. But I feel good about Facebook, how many people we reach. Instagram, we got a little bit ways to go from the last year, but still moving forward. So I think that's good stuff to show. I did go ahead and on the next slide, it is hard to see if you're out there, but I listed our top posts so far this school year. So you can kind of see what people like to see, and I listed it by reach. So if you guys remember, last week, we had our custodian at Traybine, Brian Jasper, who we featured for some great things he was doing. Also, he was featured on, I think, WDTN's Hometown Heroes. One of the news stations who does the Hometown Heroes. We posted that as well. But his posts, it reached 59.5,000 people. So Facebook, social media, if we have the ability to reach people, we just have to make sure we're pushing out the right content and what we need to be pushing out. I did put over here on the side, I was in a training last week at Cincinnati, or in Cincinnati, at the ESC, Hamilton County ESC, was really great social media training. One of the things I brought back was, which I was not familiar with, that the ideal for us is 33% reach for every post we do. And Facebook analytics does break it down to the, our median post for everything we post is 300, 3,488 is our reach. So if you do the math, the 33% is based off our following. We really need to reach 29, 22 each time. So we're hitting that median mark that we should be hitting. So that's a really good stat to show you guys. The next one, it's just a little bit more Facebook in depth. You could spend all day in any of these analytic sites, especially Facebook. This is one I had not looked at in the previous years, but they have something called benchmarking. It's business comparison. So when we make our Facebook, we're listed as a public school district. So it's somewhere they're pooling based off our location. They're pulling, they're comparing us to other schools. For the business comparison, we are in the top percentile. We actually, as far as how much we're publishing, what we're posting. So if you look at content interactions, we're 9.3,000, which is higher than most of the others. On the other side, it shows you businesses to watch, which if you look, they pull these for us. I didn't pull these. But you'll see Mason, Dublin, Hillard, Centerville, and Lakota. And it kind of shows where we rank with them. So this is kind of just to compare us with some other school districts where we are. But so comparison and then businesses to watch. So just good pieces of information again, shows kind of where we are as far as Facebook. And this is my favorite piece that I brought back from training last week. I did not, I've never seen this graphic before until this training. Everything is based off, the analytics are based off algorithms, but you never really know how things work. So you just know Facebook does this, and here's why they do it. This is kind of like their point system. So with everything you post on Facebook, if we posted the Brian Jasper post, anything following that was going to be seen higher than what Facebook deems their normal. So every post you do, Facebook says, here's how many people we're going to show it to. But if it does really well, your next post is going to go a little higher. If it does really bad, they might be like, well, the people weren't interested, we might show you a little less people. It just kind of goes up and down, and Facebook kind of determines who wants to see what on your app. If you follow the Beaver Creek City Schools Facebook page, you're like, wait, I never see anything. It's probably because your Facebook thinks you're not interested. By the more you go to it, the more you see it, the more it thinks you want to see the content. And this is their scale. So if you like something Beaver Creek posts, it gets one point. If you comment, seven points, and if you share, 14 points. So sharing is a big deal. I was not aware of how big the deal it is versus liking a post. So this is kind of what builds your analytics and your algorithms, and also how Facebook determines what you like to see. So I just, I like this graphic just because I'm kind of a geek like that, but it was just interesting to me. So the more you share, the better than liking something. And then commenting is interacting, so that's always a good thing. I don't know if you guys saw last week, it was kind of a different post than we normally post. I posted a question about who was your favorite teacher. That was actually part of the training. They wanted everybody to post it, and so she could show just how valuable little questions are. And I didn't, didn't see the value at first, but I ended up going back, and there was like, I can't, over 200 comments because people were just interacting. And it's building those comments just versus those likes. So definitely something we can do more of in the future. It just random questions, just getting our community interacting, so. Instagram is a little different than Facebook. When it first came out, it was all about photos, so that's what, you have to have a photo for Instagram. Here, I just shared our top three posts or photos, which you'll see, most of these, or two of them are the same on Facebook. The top highest reach on Instagram, though, is an Ankeny post. And I've noticed, you kind of get to learn your social media. When I post something through Ankeny on Facebook, it doesn't do as well as it does on Instagram. And I think that's because a lot of our middle schoolers are on Instagram, and a lot of parents are on Facebook. So stuff like that, it's more valuable to put on Instagram for us. But we always put it on both, but just, just kind of shows the difference of the platforms. Next, a little bit more on Instagram. Just shows where we, kind of that business comparison again, like Facebook, just does the same thing. So here, I think for, we're lower on Instagram than we were for Facebook, so we have some work to do to kind of build up to our comparables, but you can still see where we are. Twitter's a little different. We have a lot of accounts on Twitter that are associated with the district, mostly athletics, which is great, that's a great place for them. I don't always tweet for us something from the elementary on Twitter, just because I, not that it's not valuable, but it's a different platform, and it's just different resources and different environment. So you can kind of see here, we just posted one yesterday. Thankfully, somebody pointed out that we had a Shaw Elementary alumni who was a college football player and did like a highlight or a staff shout-out. That did really well. I actually went back, I posted it, like two minutes later, I deleted it. Twitter, you can't edit, and I retweeted, and I tagged the player, which I thought was smart on our behalf, because then he could see it and other people would see it. So that's our top post on Twitter so far. And then the second one was our Jeopardy player last week, and then another Jeopardy one. So again, Twitter, you can kind of see where you are with what kind of content versus the other two. That's why I put all three out here for you, so you guys can kind of get a hang of where we are, because they're all different. We try to post on all, but they're all different platforms and different stakeholders on each one. YouTube, I put this on here just because we do have BCS, BCSD YouTube channel. Like I said, our subscribers have doubled within the last year and a half, mostly to our live streaming. But I did think it was great to see how many views from that August 1st, 2022 to July 31st, 2023, 44,486 views. And it kind of shows where it was broken down. And then so far this year, we have 1,179. I think that will significantly grow because we have not hit our live streaming seasons yet at all. Show choir, if you're not surprised, Show Choir Invitational is the biggest we have on livestream. You can see that next slide. It shows, it breaks it down to the top views. So definitely get a lot of people watching Show Choir. We're very lucky to be able to host such a large event, so. And graduation is usually a big one, you can see over there, too. Digital communications, we do, we started last October, the district e-newsletter, which I think has been a great thing. We work off a schedule to where, between our 11 buildings, they're all assigned throughout the year, different categories. So we're not always highlighting the same. However, if they have something great, they can always submit on top of the schedule. But at least every, every month, we have content for the newsletter. Those are our expected published dates for this year. Those go out to our families, our staff, and then we put them on our website. It happened last night, is actually our board summary communications that we push out to our families and our staff. That goes out hopefully the day after, tomorrow, the day after our board meetings. Hence, it happened last night. So it's kind of a summary of what the board meeting was about and what we covered. We just started today, actually, I sent out the first one for the year, a district staff newsletter. We've tried this in the past. It kind of fizzled a little bit, but we decided, I worked with HR and some of the other departments, to bring this back. So we're sending out a monthly, mid-month notification to our staff that will highlight the different departments. So the goal for this is to try to get our, our staff to get more than just their building information. I think a lot of the times, you may be a teacher in the elementary building, but you don't know when the high school play is, or when homecoming is, or things like that. So something we're working on, and this is in progress, we just started today. But we think we have a good schedule for it, and we're pretty positive this is going to work out. But we'll see what happens. Digital or print communications, I'm sorry. So we sent out in August our back-to-school edition, which is I think the first year we did an actual back-to-school edition for Crete Connections. This is the mailer that actually goes to everybody in the community based off zip codes and I think voter registration. I'm not sure exactly how they pull it, but it goes to more than just our families. So we hit the community with this one. In the past, we've done two to three additions a year. This year, I have a schedule to do two, partly because we did the back-to-school one right in the beginning, and I think we should do a spring one, also because costs have significantly doubled since COVID and printing and everything. So if we have a need for a third, we can do it, but right now, I'm planning on a spring edition for that, so. And then videos. Last year, we brought on a contract company, Dream X Social. We started them in April and May, and we worked with them to do 10 videos a month. It ended up being, we had some really great videos. We had some videos that, we have, we did a really great video for Family Fun Day. You probably haven't seen it yet, but come Family Fun Day this year, it's going to be a great promo video. So we, we worked on kind of figuring that out, that process. We realized we're not sure 10 videos a month is what we need here. So we, we reconfigured that to where we're bringing them back. Trent McIntosh is the, who runs that with us, our cohort with Dream X Social. And we're going to do five, we're going to do five videos a month, starting with this month, September. He's working with Liz Driver to do our Character Ed kickoff video. I have a couple other things. You'll see him at Friday night's football game because he's working on the Game of Hope. He'll do a video for that. He's working with John Copeinspire, sorry, how do you say that? For this month, to kind of put together a promo for the play, which is in October, to kind of get people out and excited about that. A couple other ones we'll throw in there just to hit our five. You'll see, these are kind of where we are right now. Homecoming, we'll do a homecoming highlight one. October is National Principals Month, so we'll do something to highlight our principals and so on. So just, Paul, surprised you, I did invite Trent out to one of your community chats in October, so we could do maybe a little promo for that to try to get more attendance in those chats as well, so. Just kind of where we are. I know there's not five up there for each month. I'm trying to prepare just so we're, get them scheduled. And really, that's all I have for an update. You guys have any questions on communications, social media, anything like that?
Going back to the website, there's the events calendar. What's the process for, like, can the webmasters put things on the events calendar?
Yeah, so actually, Mike Schuman is amazing, we all know that. Mike created a really easy way for us to, I actually just sent an email today to all of our webmasters. Some of them are previous webmasters, a couple of them are new, and included principals, and then Mike as well. Just to remind them kind of the process and the expectations for our calendars. I did get a couple people who had issues with not being able to find events. So we're always working on that. Mike has created Google Calendars. So there's like an Ankeny public calendar, so the webmasters and the principals have access to that. Anything they put on their Google Calendar that's associated with that one will go directly to our website. It's just getting them into that process of remembering to add the events. Because if you don't add them, people can't find them. So it's, it's a process, and it's a learning curve. But I have, I'm pretty confident with the group of webmasters we have this year. And then athletics is a little different, if you're referring to athletics. Their calendars are built by Schedule Star, and they kind of pool, but it's, it's a little different. But with the buildings in the district, it's all a Google Calendar. So it's really easy process, it's just getting in that groove and making sure people are adding to the, to those calendars. Does that answer your question? Anything else?
I had two quick comments, just things that made me happy. I liked your comment about how comments, you know, drive up ratings. But one of the things I noticed when you asked that question, I was reading through the responses we got from our community, is it sort of built a positive feedback community. And I really enjoyed seeing.
I don't think I saw one negative comment.
Yeah, no, I didn't either. Yeah, you always kind of worry with social media, you never know. But it was so great just to see people talking about, I think it was favorite teachers, if I remember right.
I think so.
And, and then, you know, reinforcing each other, oh, I love that teacher too, and so on. And then the second thing that I really enjoyed was noticing the band concerts. I've known for a while that we've been broadcasting enough kids in music, both band and choir and show choir. And I've got family who's not local, and it sure is nice to be able to have grandparents or grandparents who maybe have mobility issues, being able to attend those concerts. And the numbers are in the hundreds, that's spectacular. That makes a huge difference for our families, so that's just great.
And sometimes, like, I've noticed, because when we livestream, someone's physically there for the most part with the equipment. We may not always have a lot of people in the moment watching them, but if you go back a week or two later, the views have jumped. It's like people go back and watch them, or they didn't, they couldn't watch it right there, but at least it's there for them, they can go back and re-watch them, so I do like that as well. It's a, I think it's a great feature. We did, last year, spent some money on upgrading the cameras. They're not, we had some issues, so a couple of them went back. So we're working on getting the better cameras installed in the auditorium, which is where most of this happens, the high school auditorium. So the quality is getting better, which I think also helps people want to watch them, so.
I just had a quick question. So I assume, these analytics, I assume, are strictly the Beaver Creek City Schools initiated posts. So like Beaver Creek Athletics, things like that, that's not measured here at all. So have we done any like analytics on those kinds of?
Are you looking at like Twitter, or which one?
Probably Twitter, as far as athletics goes, Twitter and Instagram. Because there's so, their athletics department as well as individual teams have pages.
I don't have direct access to those. How, if I worked with Brad Pompous, the athletic director, that's his account. We could pull his analytics and kind of see where he's at as well. But it's just the individual account, Beaver Creek Schools or Beaver Creek City Schools. And then I think Instagram is also Beaver Creek Schools, those accounts. But we definitely could look into that, for sure. It's hard, because I tried to make a list, and anytime I see it, like a team or a coach, who, somebody who has an actual district-associated Twitter or any kind of page, I try to follow them. In fact, if you go on my personal Facebook right now, it's all schools because I also follow other school districts, because it's always good to see what other people are doing. It's just, we have so many, it's hard to get a full list of, here's all that is out there, but.
I mean, these numbers are great, but our reach is way, way larger with all of those ancillary accounts that are also.
And like I said, for like, some of the posts, I don't always tweet them. Everything athletics or high school, I will tweet. But a lot of the, like, the elementary stuff, I don't, I don't really see the benefit in tweeting all of them. So that's, if our, if we did a lot more with the athletics and stuff, you would see a larger reach. I agree. I do get emails as well, Twitter emails. Like, I'll see a lot of stuff that coaches, and I'm not sure how it's figured or what they send me, what they don't. They come straight from Twitter. And it'll show me like a recap, a recap of maybe the weekend. And it might be Coach Russ tweeted this, or Athletics tweeted this. So I'll go back, and I will try to pull some of those and create posts from those. So it's a good resource for me. Because with athletics, they are so fast-paced, and there's a lot going on. I don't always get stuff submitted from, like we do with teachers, to post. So sometimes you got to go and pull and find, but there's really good information out there. I always encourage people to send it in to me. I try to encourage coaches, but again, I think it's, they're doing their own Twitter, so sometimes they just, they don't think about it. So it's a process, but I think I do keep a log of what we, what we post and tweet. So at the end of the last year, I met with all the building principals. I did not meet with athletics, but maybe I should this year, and kind of highlight. Or I pointed out, like, here's how many times your building was highlighted on social media, solely your building throughout the school year. And they may be here versus another building. And my goal is, how can we not take away from the buildings that's up here, but how do we get those lower buildings more, you know, more push, I guess, so. more, you know, more push, I guess, so. And it's still early. I always push out, we have, we have a process for our staff to submit, our teachers and everybody to submit. I actually went to Valley yesterday and was at 5th Grade Art Club, and taking some pictures, and I was talking to the teacher, and she had no idea how to submit to social, which is crazy to me, because we push that information out, but sometimes it just goes through one ear and out the other, or they just don't see it. So it's just reminding them constantly, hey, you can submit cool things you're doing, or events you have going on, and then, and things like that. So I would also really like to see more of our fundraiser events highlighted on social media. We have a lot of those as well. I know there's a Crumble Cookie one tomorrow night somewhere, or Showfire maybe. Showfire has Crumble Cookie tomorrow. I only know that because one of our central office staff members sent that, as far as, hey, everybody, here's what's going on. I see Chipotle all the time, or the-
There's a city barbecue one too tomorrow.
Yeah, some of those, and maybe they won't get that much more money, but if we push it out on the district Facebook, which has a larger reach, you might get a little bit more money in their fundraising fund. So I just, you try to pull those in. Those are things I pull, I bring up to PTOs when we meet with them, because they have a lot of events as well, but it's always a process, and we're just trying to do better and trying to push out as much as we can, so.
Well, I think you do a great job of Facebook, because it's constantly coming dingin' on my phone. Every time I-
I try not to be too much, but I try to make-
Ding, 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 it's like Beaver Creek City Schools, yeah.
We have a lot of positive things in the district, so I feel like we have so much to share. You kind of sometimes have to pick and choose, too, because you don't want to overkill, but you want to make sure we're getting all the great things out there, so. So if you ever see anything you want me to highlight, let me know. Always looking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annika.
Boy, and by the way, before you get away, the best update on communications I've seen.
I'll be here.
Yeah, bar none. I mean, communication is the key to everything, and transparency, because I know when I talk to voters, it's all about, well, we don't know what you guys are doing. We don't know.
You try to put it out there, but you gotta put it out everywhere. Everybody's somewhere different.
That's true.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Annika. All right, our final presentation, we've asked John Clemmons, our board attorney, to come up and share with the board some guidance that has been released by the auditor of the state. So I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Clemmons, legal counsel for the district, and I believe there they are, being passed out right now is the guidance that's been issued by the state auditor's office. So that's what I'm going to be referring to, and you can kind of follow along, and, you know, ask any questions at any time that you'd like to, and hopefully, when we're done with this, you don't feel like you've had the handicap of legal counsel. Everybody's entitled to it, so. On the first page there, the whole thing is summarized in the high-level overview paragraph. It basically says that Ohio law prohibits spending or using public funds to support or oppose the passage of any and all levy or bond issues, or to compensate any employee for time spent on an activity intended to influence the outcome of levy or bond issue. So, simple in concept, very difficult in the application. So what the auditor has done is given us a few what-ifs and samples of how to answer that question, and I'm going to try to hit the highlights of them and elaborate where I think maybe some clarification could be needed. So flipping over, use of district website, email, and other communications. The first one is, may the district send out reminders to vote? The answer is kind of surprisingly yes, but you're not allowed to include information designed to influence the vote. And of course, they add that if you're going to do that, it's recommended that you do it every year, not just when there's a levy on the ballot. So I don't know what our practice is. Some districts note Election Day on their calendar. You may do that, but if you're sending out notifications about voting, please do it every year. Can the levy committee use the district's bulk rate or provide postage? It's a no on the bulk rate. You can't share your bulk rate permit. But you, you can allow them to use your postage machine as long as they pay for everything. My recommendation is stay away from that. You probably have. It's just too complicated. What does it really cost to have a postage machine? How much of the light bill goes in that? How much of the heating? What's the, it's not just the stamp. So better off to stay away from that, and I think that's probably something that you haven't permitted anyway. May the district allow a levy committee to use other district premises or equipment? Again, they say yes. My advice would be, as long as that's pursuant to a policy where all groups are treated equally and given the same opportunities, including any anti-levy folks, if there are any. So if you don't want to get into that conundrum, it's probably better to stay away from having them use district premises. There usually are public places where the levy committee can meet. There are libraries, firehouses, public buildings, and they can usually do their business without having to be on district property. It just muddies the water. May a superintendent or district administrator provide details to the community about an upcoming levy via a letter, the district's regular newsletter, email distribution, or a post on the district's website? Yes, but it can only be factual information. It can only be, this is the amount of the levy, this is what it's for. You're allowed to say what might be cut, or what will be cut as a result of that, but you're not allowed to say, keep our school strong, our kids deserve it, you know, those types of advocacy. So a lot of that is done, and the district, I've reviewed a number of those. We try to watch, keep our skirts clean all the way through there, as far as advocating, and I think we've done a pretty good job. May the district send levy committee communications home with the students? No, we're paying the teachers to spend their time sticking them in everybody's backpack, or however they get them, and that's considered public support of a levy. So you're allowed to publish financial data, and Joy does a good job of compiling that, and that's shared on a regular basis, I believe, anyway, so we're fine there. You can tell what cuts will be made. May a district provide information about how to contact the levy committee? The answer they give here is perhaps, but caution is advised, and, you know, I think if they call and they ask, you're allowed, I think, to give them public information, but I would minimize that. Maybe give them a name of a person and a phone number, but let them carry the ball from there. Now, at the bottom of page five, this is for the board members themselves, they have taken, the auditor has taken the position that you're only being compensated for attending board meetings. So unless you're in a board meeting, the auditor says you're not being paid. Now, we all know that being on the board involves a lot more than attending meetings, but they're giving us a break here and saying, unless you're in a meeting, it's pretty much the sky's the limit as far as you participating in levy activities, explaining your vote, saying why you think the levy's necessary. You're given much more leeway than district administrators are. So that's, in a way, that's good news. And even during the meeting, you're certainly allowed to explain your vote and say, this is why I voted for the levy. I would avoid the, we need to support our kids type statements that, during board meetings. Just factual, logical type reasons for your vote to put the levy on. may a superintendent or treasurer participate in levy committee activities? The answer is yes, but caution should be exercised. And this is where it comes into, the superintendent's job involves a lot more than being in the office from eight to five, or whatever the hours are, and maybe attending a public function. He's pretty much on duty. Same with the treasurer. So my advice to the superintendent and treasurer would be, try to make your statements factual. We'll have to find other people in the community to kind of lead the emotional side of it, of supporting the kids and that sort of thing. And it, I have found, in my experience, that you're the superintendent of schools, they pretty much know you're for the levy. That's not a shock to them. And if you can find some well-known member of the community that'll say it for you, probably carries more weight. I equate it to the candidates that have their spouse write a letter endorsing them in the election. Well, gee, what a surprise. Guy got his wife to support him. He's doing well. So if you can stick to the more factual things. May the district disperse information on behalf of the levy committee even during non-working hours? No, you can't carry their water for them, so you shouldn't be involved in the process of approving their, their activities. You really need a strong committee chairperson to take the lead on that and, be the voice of the committee then. You can pay a lawyer to draft a resolution necessary to put the levy on the ballot. That's good. You've already done that. What they say in here, when you read it, is numerous times they repeat, suggesting that the board adopt a statement of facts about the levy, and that people use that as the talking points when they're out and about, because it kind of reminds them to stay factual and not advocacy. Of course, mainly it's the superintendent and the treasurer, but during business hours, they are allowed to present information. So even though, I don't think you need to take a personal day, Paul and Joy, every time someone wants you to come and speak and provide information. There are some people saying, oh, you've got to do that on your own time. As long as you're providing information, you're okay. They are suggesting a disclaimer, Joy and Paul and the board, if you're comfortable with it, that says the information being provided is merely factual. District personnel are not allowed to advocate for or against the passage of a levy or bond issue during times when they are being compensated by the district. So I think I'd have a little postcard in my pocket, Paul, and I might read that whenever I was out speaking, just, and they say that that goes a long way towards clarifying your purpose. There's a number of them that are kind of obvious. It says, can the architectural firm hired by the district to design or build new facilities be required or expected to assist in directing or funding a levy campaign? I think kind of obviously, no, you can't make that part of the contract, or even more than just their voluntary support if they choose to give it. You can allow the use of district logos on pro-levy campaign materials, but unfortunately, you'd have to allow the Beaver to be on the anti-levy committee's logos also. So, you know, you can make your decision about whether that's worth it. They say here, you're allowed to use district funds to express gratitude for the passage of a levy, for voting yes. I would stay away from that. I think if, people say, I don't, I don't pay taxes to have my tax dollars used to tell me thanks for voting for a levy. I didn't want it anyway. You would just draw the negative fire. And of course, the question is, what is off time? As I explained, yours is pretty clear. Paul and Joy and other district administrators, not so much. Can we allow our employees to wear pro-levy buttons? The answer is, we should not during times of work. It's considered duty hour, so they're saying they recommend not doing that. They say, do it on your own time and your own dime, and so if district administrators are going to be actively involved in campaign activities, and, you know, I think sometimes you're on the sign committee or whatever, Paul and others, make sure you can clearly demonstrate that that was during your off hours. They ask the question of whether or not, may levy campaign promotional items be placed on or around school grounds? The answer is yes. My answer would be no, because the minute that sign goes up, the public's going to go by, and they're going to think you paid for it, whether you did or not, and you also open the door to any other type negative signs that someone may want to put up. So I think most districts now stay away from that, even though they indicate it's technically permitted on an objective basis. Can you allow the campaign committee to purchase advertisement on district signs or scoreboards? And the answer is yes, as long as it's done on an objective standard, that anyone can do it within the parameters of decency and other general requirements. The wearing of pins and buttons again, we talked about, may they use school facilities to hold their meetings? The answer is yes, but preferably no. Hopefully, they can find another place. Can you allow the levy committee to do videos on district property? As long as it's content-neutral policy that you're following, yes, you can. Again, you may invite This is an interesting- This is an interesting one because it brings up an issue that I think they've kind of muddied the waters on, on page 16. It says, are teachers and/or coaches permitted to send letters to their classrooms or teams if it is after hours and done using the staff members' personal funds? Says caution is advised, doesn't say yes or no. I would think that we probably would want to stay away from it. It goes on to say, teachers and coaches have the First Amendment right to engage in activity in support of or in opposition of a levy, but on their own time and own dime. Then it says, teachers and coaches should not sign a letter or email under their official capacity as coach or teacher when advocating for passage of a levy. Well, every letter to the editor I think I've ever seen, they want to tell you why they know what they're talking about. I am a coach and I've been a coach for 40 years. I'm a graduate, or I'm a professor, or I'm a, I have the ability to express an intelligent opinion. This seems to cloud that. So hopefully, we can stay away from that. You're not allowed to ask the staff to contribute funds. It's pretty obvious. And then it goes into about four pages of what you can and can't ask on survey questions. You're allowed to ask questions that relate to the needs of the district. Do you think we should have one 912 building or two separate buildings? Those types of questions are okay. You're not supposed to ask any questions that gauge the public's appetite or dislike of levies. You're not say, would you support a levy to do this? Or would you support a levy to do that? You can talk about needs and, and I think from what I've seen, that's what our surveys have done. So, you know, I, from working with Paul and Joy and the rest of the district administrators, I think you're in good shape. There's nothing new here that we haven't been doing pretty much all the way. If you have questions, I'd be glad to try to answer anything that is on your mind.
I will just add that, you know, whenever we go into this type of mode of communicating about any type of levy, we run everything by John, just so John has that eye. Because something that may, something that we write may not, may sound neutral to me, but when John sees, John will say, you need to take this line out. I feel like it's leading. And so we, we run all that by him just to make sure that we've got someone else's eyes looking at it, to make sure we're making good decisions on the communication that we put out. So I appreciate John's efforts and time because he looks at all those documents coming out.
Well, thank you. It's good to see you all.
I appreciate you coming here tonight, John.
No problem.
I mean, this is crazy stuff, but we have to be careful.
Absolutely.
We really do.
It, my impression, I think Joy and I and Bobby went to hear the auditor in person and seems like there's a renewed emphasis on this. So it's even more important to be careful. They weren't draconian about it, but they were letting us know that they're watching. And, you know, they have had some violations here locally that they felt they needed to address, so we don't want to be in that camp.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. That concludes presentations for this evening.
Okay, we do have comments from the public. We have four people tonight, which is good. And, but I'm, so I'm gonna make the statement so I don't have to repeat it over and over again. So please understand that when you come to speak, you're given three minutes. You need to state your name and address. There will be no comments from the board tonight, but should your comments require a response, somebody will get back to you. And with that, we're gonna start with Greg Early.
Yes, my name is Greg Early and my address is 433 Towncrest Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio. And I come before the board this evening to talk about Proposal One, which will be on the ballot for the November people to decide on. And this is a very serious issue. If you look deep down inside of this and you look at the proposed amendment, this is going to impact parental rights. Both of my daughters have been through Beaver Creek Education System. My granddaughter is in Beaver Creek. We've been here since 1995. This is a social issue that's gonna impact our education system. And after the presentation by Mr. Clemens there, it's probably gonna be a pretty hard question to get answered from the board. But my, my question is, is the Board of Education, what is their position on Issue One concerning parental rights? As you look at this bill, the parental rights are going to be definitely impacted with this amendment. This is out of section, this is gonna be in addition to Article One, Section 22 of the Ohio State Constitution. It's gonna become law. My concern is, our children have been entrusted to you guys and the school system. Are you going to have the parents' backs? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diana Unger and I live at 3461 Nappany Drive. And I'm here to speak as the Beaver Creek School District Levy Campaign Chair. First of all, I want to thank the board for allowing me to be here and to do public commentary. And thank you to the administration for answering all my information requests in a timely fashion so that we can properly represent why our voters need to vote yes for the permanent improvement levy that is on the ballot in November. I also would like to give a quick update about our committee activities. We've added a few more members to our team and it's been my honor to work with all of them. We've got representation from across the district. We had a popcorn festival booth for the first time and we debuted our vertical timeline on our levy history for the district since 1989. And it was received well. In fact, it helped us to secure positive votes in the minds of people that maybe were not sure how they were going to vote. And it was a simple message that took emotions out of this. And basically, we just turned to the timeline and said, the permanent improvement levy that is on the ballot was originally passed in 1989 as a one mil levy. And for every five years, it's passed since then. And here we are 34 years later and it is still anchored on the property values from 1989. And the district is simply asking voters to vote yes so that the new formula will be based on 2022 property values. And that is all. So it was received well. And in the course of the next six weeks, as we finish up our campaign, we have a lot of new information that's coming out. We've secured 15 business sign installations that will happen by the end of next week. We've already got volunteers lined up for that. We have car magnets. We have our shirts that say to vote yes. So I did bring some extras of those and we'll set those in the back. And I'd encourage anyone who would like to support the district with this levy to take one of those with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claire Chinskey. I live at 3121 Patsy Drive. I'm speaking to you today as a member of the levy committee and also a district parent. My comments are related not only to communication regarding levies, but community engagement in general, and specifically the district website calendar. Thank you to Annika for her update on communications because she specifically noted the email I had sent earlier this week and addressed my concerns. I had, as a parent, gone to look to see when homecoming occurred and could not find it. The events calendar has very few things on it. The first days of school, a couple days off, and that's it. As, as a community member, where do we expect to find that information about events going on in the community? When people talk to the levy committee, they express a desire to be informed about community events. And they probably aren't going to do as much digging as most people, or as some people would, like I did, looking for homecoming. It took me multiple websites and ended up on the athletics calendar to find it. And it was a Google calendar, not even on their, on their specific page. So if we have events like the superintendent chat, community chats, I would expect to see those on the calendar so that the community can show up to events like that. Because I think that they're looking for, at least some people are looking for those things and want to be involved and hear of what's going on in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aiden Howley. I live at 270 Scarlet Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio. So I'm a senior patrol leader and a life scout in Beaver Creek 256 that we have there in the back. I'm also a junior in high school at the Beaver Creek High School. At the moment, I'm working on my Eagle Scout project in which I'll be demolishing and reconstructing a slightly collapsed bridge in the Beaver Creek High School land lab. The 24-foot bridge has collapsed on one side and it's a bit of a hazard to passersby people using the land lab. And so I'm hoping to be able to repair that and get it back in working order. I've been working on this project's planning and paperwork since mid-June and I've been working with Principal Wren and our groundskeepers, Mr. John Schlag and Ms. Kelly Dexter, in order to, you know, get the green light, get some funding. I have received approval, but I've been having some funding issues recently. So I've spoken already with the folks at Phillips Concrete, Carter Lumber, Lowe's, Home Depot, Xenia Demolition Landfill, as well as the Green Optimists. I've gotten some commitments and some donations from Xenia Demolition Landfill, Green Optimists, and Carter Lumber, as well as a discount from Home Depot. Well, this is really great progress. I still have a long way to go. I've received $500 from the Green Optimists and the discounts from Carter Lumber and Xenia Demolition Landfill, as well as Home Depot. They have certainly helped. So at the moment, I'm still looking for any monetary or just any other like types of commitments or donations that would really help me out. I'm in touch with Mr. Wren. He's helping me contact the athletics department, the groundskeepers, and the science department, J-Ratsi Program, all of whom use the land lab, just if they have any interest in improving the land lab, helping us rebuild this, if they would be able to help us out, donate anything. So we're hoping to receive some donations from them. Any donations that can be spared are greatly appreciated. They really help me out. I'm at the moment, I'm here for my communications merit badge, as is the rest of my troop. Our troop itself, we've got our scout master back there, John Steinbrenner, and our adult leaders and the rest of our scouts. We frequently help out the community. Recently, we've been helping out the seniors, the senior citizens, you know, some odd jobs around the house that they can't really do anymore due to their age, you know, cleaning up houses, heavy lifting, yard work, et cetera. We've also helped out Camp Hugh Taylor Birch. They're kind of our home base for all our campouts, summer camps, et cetera. Help out Mosaic Church. They're our meeting location. St. Vincent de Paul's Food Drive, as well as the Beaver Creek Fish Pantry with, through our scouting for food program. We've helped out the Green Optimists, you know, as they're supporting our troop and my project. We've been helping them out with flags set up and take down for their Avenue of Flags program, as well as this lovely little kite program they had a couple weeks ago, or months ago, pardon me. But our main assistance to the community has been our senior citizen assistance recently. As I said before, any assistance would be greatly appreciated. If there's any of you would like to contact me, obviously, I have my number and my email. If you would have anybody who would be able to reach out to me, it's greatly appreciated. Feel free to. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Aiden, and congratulations on working on your Eagle project. That is quite an accomplishment. I've attended several of those ceremonies. So thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for coming. And thank everybody else tonight for coming to speak to us. Okay, I'm gonna need a motion in a second to approve the minutes for the August 17, 2023 Regular Board of Education meeting.
Is that moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Regano?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
And Dr. Fisher?
Okay, we're onto items for board discussion.
Now, we have a number of items here. The first one, I'll turn it over to Mr. Darren Schwederman. It is a chief security job description, slight change.
Thank you, Mr. Otten. We take a look at that. In our board book, in working with our Director of Student Services, Mr. Madden, and our Chief Security Officer, Mr. Chris Williams, there's a recommendation you'll find, I'm looking for the page number here.
Forty-eight.
Thank you for that item. Couple of updates concerning that job description. And just wanted to bring that to the board attention this evening and ask you to consider, you'll find under responsibilities and essential functions on the draft here, there are some bolded items and those are the changes that are being recommended. And we will bring this back to the board for approval and consideration at, later in this, in this meeting. So you can see those two bold items. And if you have any questions, let us know.
Are those additions or?
Those, those are additions, yeah. As, they were not part of the original job description. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Schwederman. The next item is Item B, Service Agreement. This is a contract with Sarah Anderson. I just want to let the board know what this is. So I'm not sure if you noticed, but Mrs. Reddick is due to have a baby like in a week. Monday. She's scheduled for Monday. So she thinks she's gonna come into work on Monday. Yeah, yeah. I think she'll be here. I, I, I'm kinda, I'll be disappointed. No, I will not be disappointed. But we have a staff member, Sarah Anderson, who used to be a staff member in the district and recently resigned for some other opportunities. And so Dr. Fiore and I reached out to Sarah, talked to her about this opportunity. So what we will be doing is during Annika's maternity leave, obviously, we know how important communication is. We will be bringing Sarah in. She'll be scheduled at a minimum 20 hours per week to try to keep, make sure that communication stays fluid and is moving. Anything beyond 20 hours, she'll be submitting time cards for that. So we're just trying to make sure that we've got the right person in place that can fill in for Annika as she's gone. So we want Annika to enjoy her maternity leave and enjoy every minute with her child. So looking forward to meeting little Coen. But that's what that is. So you'll see that later in the agenda. She will actually be coming tomorrow, I believe. Sarah will be coming tomorrow to meet with Annika to start working through some of those pieces before she delivers the baby on Monday. So, so that is what Item B is. Item C, I'm gonna ask Mr. Alexander to come up. He's gonna talk about in addition to our culinary services program.
Thank you, Mr. Otten, Mrs. Miller, and members of the board.
Our student nutrition department has had much success over the last few years, and we are excited about the potential to add a culinary services coordinator to the student nutrition team. The key benefits of this position would be a focus on improved customer service, focusing on product quality and consistency, execution of new item taste testing with regular customer involvement and feedback, managing standardized recipes and new recipe and menu development in coordination with K-12 regulations and student customer feedback, dedicated staff culinary skills training, best practices, and new recipe implementation, informal development and management of district catering services to be used for student, staff, district, and community events, which would be an added revenue stream. All the benefits that I mentioned are focused on increasing meal participation. Every 1% of increased meal participation is equivalent to $75,000 annually, and we believe this position has the potential to grow meal participation much more than that 1%. Our job is to serve the students of the Beaver Creek City Schools, and we feel this position will do just that by creating more opportunities for communication with students and developing a menu that will be more attractive to our students. Lastly, this position is funded directly by our student nutrition department, and no taxpayer dollars will be used for salary or benefits. The position is also a part of our spend-down plan that we expect to be required by the Ohio Department of Education during this year's annual review. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Giles. Great.
And that concludes items for board discussion.
So on to financial reports. I'm going to need a motion in a second to approve the following: August 2023 financial reports, final appropriations for fiscal year '24, and August 2023 donated items.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, who moved? Was that voting? Okay, thank you. Real quickly, if you look on page two, we, you know, I have my current balance sheet on there, and looking at the current revenues and expenditures, we're pretty much running in line with previous years, except on the local revenue, which is approximately 300% higher than normal, and that's due to our interest earned at this point. Normally, we're at about $150,000, and currently, right now, we're at $550,000 earned in interest. It's just due to the market and the way it is right now, and, you know, where you can put your money and earn interest, which is Star Ohio for our district, you know, it's very safe, and that's where our funds are to earn that type of interest. As for expenditure, there's nothing at this point that's an outlier that I'm looking at that I'm concerned about. Salaries, of course, because we went from 26 pays to 24 pays, it is going to run a little bit higher because we're paying out more with each pay than we normally would in a 26-pay period. So that's perfectly normal at this point. I do want to talk about the federal unrestricted aid that is there on your balance sheet, and I have it right now at 1.8 million. That might change as we get closer to the five-year forecast. But Impact Aid is a federal government's reimbursement to school districts for the presence of federally connected students and non-taxable federal property. Non-taxable federal property being, in their definition, military bases, Indian lands, federal low-rent housing, national laboratories, and grasslands. Beaver Creek City School District receives Impact Aid for the presence of our federally connected students through Wright Patterson Air Force Base. We do not receive any funds for non-taxable federal property, like our neighboring district of Mad River Local, who has base housing. And so they receive property, and they also receive aid for the students who actually attend there. So they receive both, but we only receive the one. Right now, our student population, we average around 8,000, and of those 8,000, on average, 2,600 are students who are connected to the military. And we receive Impact Aid funding for each one of these students called basic support. Currently, we're receiving about $765,000 in basic support for all our regular ed military-connected students, which equals out to approximately $294 per student. If we were fully funded for Impact Aid, it would be closer to 2 million for these students or $770 per student. Mr. Madden and I, and Jeff, please feel free to jump in at any time, we actually attended what's called the NAFIS Conference in DC this weekend. NAFIS stands for the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools. This association advocates to keep the funding that we currently have and to fully fund this line at, you know, sometime in the future. That is their real goal, to get it fully funded. It's been around since 1959, I think. I mean, it's been around a very long time, NAFIS. Impact Aid, and I learned that this weekend, is not a forward-funded item, meaning that you have to keep going back. Every time there's a budget that comes up, you have to go in and advocate and ask for this budget to be re-appropriated within the budget bill. So currently, the House has zero-funded this budget. They've zero-funded it. The Senate, on the other hand, the Senate Appropriations Committee, has actually, has the current budget plus an addition of $10 million. Now, because more districts are applying for this funding, even with the addition of $10 million, we don't see that as giving us anything more. We think it'll just flat-fund us because there are more people, you know, more districts who are becoming eligible for this funding. So yesterday, along with Mad River Local, Fairborn, Wyndham, and Southeast Local School Districts, we met with the staff for Senators JD Vance, Sher Brown, and for Representative Mike Turner to explain our need for these funds to support our military families and that asked them to support the Senate version of funding for the Impact Aid budget, and with a push, of course, to eventually fully fund this item. And if you look, I gave each one of you this brochure, and it's very well done. The brochure has for it Fairborn, Beaver Creek, and Mad River. And Beaver Creek is the largest funded district for the state of Ohio for this Impact Aid. We have, you know, as I said, 2,600 students of our 8,000 on average. So I learned a lot this weekend, but it left me with a lot of questions. Wow, it's, I mean, you know, and it made me feel good when I went to the new to NAFIS session, and they're like, it's going to take many, many, many times for you to keep coming back and learning how this works and learns how, you know, anything that has to do with government funding, you know, they just have to, wow, make it really complicated. But I did. I'm glad I went. I'm glad I understand. I'm glad I understand the need of advocating for this for our military families. I think it's a really huge deal. And having Jeff with me, you know, in attendance, it really helped me understand the process and how to go about it. I think it's really important that we go. I mean, they even said something about, you know, coming back in six months because, you know, it's twice a year. They want to see these districts twice a year. They want to talk to you twice a year and understand it. And they ask a lot of questions. They were very attentive and very all-in. I thought that was great. For all three offices, I didn't feel like any of them were sitting there going, oh, okay, you know. They were very attentive. They asked a lot of questions about what the need was and, you know, what we were doing with the money. We do also receive impact funding, additional Impact Aid, separate from these funds through the Department of Defense also. So there's this aid, and then there's the Department of Defense aid. And that is more for the severely disabled students. And that one, I haven't quite dug all the way into. Dr. Fiore and I have had conversations about it. I don't quite get all of that yet and how that's calculated. That one, we don't advocate for. That one's already part of the budget. It's always been budgeted, and so it's just something that we're able to apply for. But I think it's very important that we go. So I was glad to be able to dig into one of those line items and figure out what it was all about and how the application process happens and who we're getting the money from. And so, you know. Is there anything else, Jeff?
Yeah, it's just interesting to hear you talk about the budget process and potential battles that seem to be ongoing between the House and the Senate. So keep an eye on that, that's, you know, that will land. Both Houses are talking about the distance between Senate and the House when it comes to the budget.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah. So that was it.
Well, thank you both for going on the behalf of Beaver Creek Schools. Okay, any other discussion? Can I need a motion in a second?
We've got the motion in.
I mean, I need a, sorry, call the vote.
Okay. Mrs. Rogano?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Under new business, I need a motion in a second to approve the following: the employment salary changes, leaves of absence and terminations, the approval of resolution authorizing amendment of contract, approval of resolution to employ Jessica Williams, approval of strategic plan, approval of chief security job description, approval of service agreement contract with Sarah Wolf Anderson, approve four buses to be purchased at the total price of $476,400. Approve two vans to be purchased from the title IDEA funds at a total of $166,240,000, and approval of Type 4 resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just on two items tonight. First one is the approval of the strategic plan. We reviewed this last month. I would just like to commend Dr. Fiore again. This was really her focus for probably November of last year, all the way through Monday night yesterday. So Bobby has really contributed. She has carried the torch for this, and I just want to commend her for all the work she's done. The document that you're looking at, she created herself from the information, and she shared with me how excited she was that she got to learn a new program, not that Bobby needed to learn a new program. But I just want to commend her because it's top-notch. It will look very good on our website, and it will be very easy to communicate our strategic plan to our family. So I want to thank everybody involved, but specifically Bobby, for what she's done there. The other item is Item F, and that is that contract with Sarah Wolf. Just to point that out, we'll ask for approval for that tonight, since she'll be starting tomorrow. And that's all I have from the business.
Bobby, the presentation, this document is so beautifully put together, so easy to understand. It is going to be beautiful on the website. Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's very eye-catching, and it's easy to understand, and there's the key. Thank you. Okay, please call the vote.
Mr. Taylor?
Yep.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rogano?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're into announcements. So October 5th is the Beaver Creek High School Homecoming Parade. October 6th is Beaver Creek High School Homecoming Football Game. October 7th is Beaver Creek High School Homecoming Dance. October 13th, there is no school, it's Staff Work Day. And the next Board of Education meeting will be October 19th. It will be a joint work session between the Board of Education and the Beaver Creek Township at 6:00 PM.
That will occur at Beaver Creek Township.
At the Beaver Creek Township.
Yeah.
Okay. So don't show up here.
Yeah, Beaver Creek Township, on Orchard Lane.
Which is their stop-fire station. Yep. And we're into board comments. Dr. Taylor? Oh, no.
You got demoted?
I'm looking over here.
I'll take it.
Oh, hey. Dr. Fisher, now I'm looking this way. Sorry about, but hey, you know. Okay, there you go.
Thanks. So one thing I wanted to share, I think a lot of us have heard, we've got some comments about high school homecoming, and several members of the community have expressed their frustration that their students aren't able to bring dates from outside our schools. I just want to thank the administration for taking the time to explain to me the security concerns behind that. Obviously, we don't want to get into those things in public. Security is something we have to keep private. But we're, a lot of us are disappointed that we're not able to open this up to a broader community, and I think there's an interest in our schools in being as inclusive and welcoming to our community as possible. And so I'm hoping that as we move forward, we find a way to achieve both goals, ensuring the safety and security of our students, but also host a large event that allows our students to bring their friends from the community and allows the broader community to engage with us at these celebrations. So just wanted to share that. On the legislative front, there's two issues that I think are worth mentioning. One, OSBA, the Ohio School Board Association, meeting is coming up. They have a legislative policy statement which advocates for state-level policies. That's published online. I'll have an opportunity to represent our district's interest there. So if anyone has reviewed that document and has inputs for me, or wants to discuss an element of it, by all means, you know where to get ahold of me. I'm happy to have those conversations and interested in hearing those comments. And then the other, if you're tracking, there was a move to shift a lot of the power of the State Board of Education under the governor's office. The state of Ohio has had a constitutional amendment for many decades now that establishes a state board of education that is answerable to the public. And there is now a lawsuit filed saying that the move to shift those powers under the governor's office is unconstitutional. So that'll be moving forward. We'll see what happens there. We may or may not lose the influence of the state board of education in Ohio, which could make some significant differences in the ocean we find ourselves in here, trying to implement all those policies and laws and guidances and so on. So that's all I had.
Mr. Taylor?
All right. Demoted. Feeling so good.
Well, I'll promote you.
First off, Beaver Creek Schools, everyone I've talked to just had thought that Beaver Creek Schools are off to a great start, and everybody seemed to be very happy. My grandkids seem to be very happy, so I take them as the voice, voice of authority on that. And so we keep up the good work. Of course, we have lots of cool things coming up with sports and performances, performance groups, that we'll all be excited to observe and be aware of. And it's also, those kinds of things also speak about our community and the importance that those types of activities play into. Career Center is also off to a great start this year. Outside of the fact that we had to turn down about 250 kids this year, which is, I feel very sad for the kids who really wanted to be there, and at this point, we just don't have the space. So we have been doing a lot of discussion about how to expand our curriculums and our labs to accommodate those. We expanded the whole academic section this year to accommodate extra kids, from the 800 or so students to 900 or so students. So that's a big, big thing out there, but other than that, all seems to be moving along and very excited about that. The last thing, I want to give a shout-out to a family friend, a former student, and someone who's made a pretty successful strides in life. And this comes from a group called the IACP, which is the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And their whole purpose, their mission, is to advance the policing profession through advocacy, research, outreach, and education. So the young lady I'm talking about is a lady named Megan Wade, and she is the daughter of Mrs. Wade, who teaches 5th grade at Main School. And Megan has won that award. It's the top 40 of 40. I think that's right. Yes. So this is an award that is not just a state award or a national award. It's an international award. And of the 40 people, there are people from Dubai, and Norway, and Argentina, and places all over the world. So the top 40 enforcement people. So the top 40 enforcement people that were involved in law enforcement, anyway, were picked to do that. And she works for the Detroit, in the Detroit area, with the Detroit Police. She's a PhD psychologist, and just a little small part of her write-up was, they call her Dr. Wade, by the way. Very nice. And says, has responded to multiple crisis situations, including two mass shootings at the high school and at the university, and coordinates reunifications and conducting stress and safety debriefs for responders and officials at crime scenes, and assist in hostage and crisis negotiation situations. And the statement about herself, she said, "If I want to help bring about change to a system, I need to be fully involved in it instead of talking from the safety of my office." So she actually is boots on the ground, and she goes out. I think it's kind of a little shift in policing philosophy right now, is to, not every situation requires a policeman and a gun. You know, requires somebody that knows about situations, knows about how to handle families, and knows about how to handle people in certain stressful emotional situations. So that's been her job, and that's why she was selected. That's my shout-out.
That's amazing. That's great.
Yeah, she's a great person.
Wow.
There's her picture. I'm just dying to see that.
Oh, show everybody.
It's hard to see.
Good for her.
She would have been the last person I wouldn't want to carry a gun, but, as it turns out, she's really good at what she does.
Thank you. Mrs. Hunt.
I just wanted to say thank you to our staff and teachers, administrators, for a good start to the school year. I, in many years, I think they always start well, but I feel like this year just was exceptionally smooth. Kids are excited to be back in the classroom, teachers are excited to be back, and I think we've provided some additional supports this year that have made things much more smooth to get the year started. I also want to say a special thank you to our bus drivers and those mechanics and people who work in that department. In light of recent events in a neighboring district where they lost a student in an accident, just highlights the importance of those individuals who work in our transportation department. So just want to say a special thank you to each of them because their job is critically important, and that's a lot of weight on shoulders. So I just want to say, on behalf of myself as a parent and as a member of the board, I just appreciate what they do each and every day, even if they're not the one driving the bus, if they're, you know, putting air in the tires. They're critically important to what they do. Excuse me. Also, I wanted to note on our donated items, I mean, every month, we have a lot of community groups and different individuals that donate money to our district to provide various things, incentives for students, or, you know, enhancements to our buildings. And there was a couple that has donated $50,000 to provide a new scoreboard for the Ed-Zink Fieldhouse at the high school. And if you're, anybody who hasn't had a student or yourself in athletics in the last several years, you know that scoreboard desperately needs replaced. So super exciting, we'll be able to raise the level of the way we can get sponsorships and things like that. It'll have a video board that will have an opportunity for businesses to sponsor our teams, so I just think that's exciting. And so I just want to thank that couple for their generosity and giving back to the district. And yeah, our sports teams are off to a great start, and I think if you can get out and support them and support those students, senior nights are already starting tonight as boys soccer. We had an exciting girls soccer win last night in the last minute of the game. They had the game-winning goal, so that was pretty cool. Just seeing some of the pictures of our kids out participating in those things is, I always love to see that. And serving on athletic council, it's really cool to see those kids get to do what they love. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay, that's good. Mr. Stein.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thanks to everyone for coming out tonight. The crowd typically thins out quite a bit after presentations, and you guys are all still here.
They hung in there.
I don't know what that says about you, no. Because the fun stuff happens after the presentations, for sure. But yeah, and all of our speakers are still here, too, so thanks for coming out and sharing the information you've shared with us. And thanks, Joy, for the information on the Impact Aid. That's very interesting. And thanks to you and Jeff for going to DC to advocate for us, and that's really cool. I did not know a lot about that, so that was very informational, and I'm glad so many people here could hear that. That's it.
It has been a great start to our school year. If you've been on Shaker Town Road, it is like an obstacle course. So every time I go down there, I think our buses are navigating that obstacle course every single day. It is amazing. Those drivers deserve way more credit, way, way, way more credit than we give them, because that road, every day, they're moving the barrels, the lights are changing. I've never seen anything like this. It's been going on since March, so, but it's really gotten to be an obstacle course now. So thank you, school bus drivers. Our marching band, our 230-something marching band, has a show, it's a Flintstone Show this year. Are you in it? It is amazing. I just, thank you, I love the show. I love that Flintstones car. I understand you took it through the McDonald's drive-through. Is that true? Yeah. I would have loved to have been the person ready to take the money when this Flintstone car comes. I thought that was really, I thought that was cool myself. So it is an amazing show. They have already taken Grand Champions at one of their competitions, so congratulations to you on that. So I love the show, come out and watch it at our football games. And our first responders' luncheon was great this year. We are very grateful to our first responders and what they do for our community, and we are grateful that they came out this year once again. We love seeing them. And thank you to everybody who made food for it. It's always fun to see them. And with that, I need a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting. And thank you, everybody, for coming. I know, what the, I know, it's right.